Okay, let's open our meeting at 6:50. And once again, I'll read this endless announcement about the recordings. Says this meeting of the planning board is being recorded for transmission on Rutland Public Act, this television and YouTube pursuant to Governor Baker's March 27, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, chapter 38, section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the town of Rutland Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specifics, information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found at Rutland's website at townofrutland.org. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so in the following manner by watching Rutland Community Television live on channel 192 and on the town's YouTube page following the meeting. No in-person attendance by members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so, despite the best efforts, we will post on Rutland's website a video recording, meeting minutes and other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Okay, with that, we have minutes of May 12. Any discussion on the minutes? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, roll call. Dick?
Aye.
Sean? Marilyn?
Aye.
Norm, aye. Okay. Onward to A and Rs. First A and R we have is 144 Turkey Hill Road.
Hi, this is Julian, I'm here.
Okay, let me just get to the plan. I do have to say that where we are talking, we're looking at reproductions of plans, you know, at this time, and they're in small format, so sometimes it can be rather difficult for us to really see exactly what's happening. So the best you can describe it to us will be helpful.
Okay, would you like me to stop now?
Yes, please.
This is a piece of property owned by the Meagres, where Rutland Sanitation used to be, Jim and Betty Meager. The property is on both sides of Turkey Hill Road and a little portion on Emerald. One side, it's the, I believe it'd be the eastern side, is just the plan of land, there's no subdivision of it, that's just what's left there. And then where the house is, which is across the street on Emerald, we're cutting out a house lot around the original farmhouse. It's at the corner, right in the corner of Turkey Hill and Irish Lane. It has plenty of frontage, way over 200 feet, and it has more area than needed. We made sure we met the setbacks to a minimum, well, a little bit more than minimum of the setback behind the barn. And this is, there's a stone wall that runs along the, if you look at the lot where the house is, there's a field there and there's a stone wall that runs through the field, and that's where the Meagres wanted the line to continue, because it's a nice natural barrier.
Okay.
And that's pretty much what we got.
Okay, questions, comments from the board?
This is three lots then?
Well, no. It's actually, one piece is just the land as it's described in the deeds, which is a one across the street with a little pond. Yeah, so there are three lots.
Three houses out of?
Say that again?
Julian, was that the one you pulled the three house lots out of?
Yeah, years ago, yes. Give me a susie, yeah.
All right, so that's, that's just showing it as it is now from back then.
Yes, there's 30 acres or so there, 29 acres, I can't quite read the, 29.07 acres.
Okay.
And then, then there's a 11.32 acre parcel, and then the house lot, which is 2 point, I can't quite read it on, I'm looking at the screen here.
Yeah.
It's over two acres.
Yeah.
Because they want to, I believe Kathy is gonna end up, she's in the house with him and Mrs. Meager, and just wanted to cut that off.
All right. I see no problem there, Norm.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, Norm, just a quick one.
Yeah.
I think the fee is off, it's, we gotta figure we have a fee for 350, I believe it should be 400.
Uh... That is correct. So, so Julian, can you have them get us the extra?
Say that, say that again, I missed.
We need, we need 50 more dollars on the fee.
Oh, okay. I will, I will relay that, we'll get that.
Okay. Well, with that condition, do I have a motion?
Only if the Meagres got the check number.
I actually have that, Dick, tonight.
Go ahead.
My check number is 115.
Okay. I'll make it that we...
Move two doors?
Oh, second.
Endorse the plan? A and R.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? In favor, roll call. Sean?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Norm, aye.
Tim, aye.
Uh, Tim, hello.
Hey. Sorry, I just had a little plumbing issue I had to fix.
Okay. Okay, next, we have A and R on 27 Glenwood Place.
Okay, this is Julian again. You'd like me to describe it?
Please.
Okay, this is a piece of property on Glenwood Place, just to give you guys a location, it's before those lots that Cleveland had done a couple of years ago. Before you get to the end of the road, it's on the left-hand side, used to be Vincent Russ's property. Now the, now the new people had bought it, Sylvia and Roman, and they want to create these lots, which we have three conventional lots that all have an acre and a half with 200 feet of frontage, either at the street or at the setback line. I noted it so there'd be no questions. You'll look at the numbers, you'll see that the number is at the setback line, I showed the setback lines. So we meet zoning on those three. And the last one, which is the house that they want to build, you'll see it, it's a big parcel, it's, you can see the shape of the house, they want to put their house way down in the back, and it's an estate lot, so we're, we proposed to do a special permit for the estate lot, and all the documents and paperwork has been submitted, but we realized that we need a special hearing for a estate lot. So right now, this is the format that we'll go with it. We did put the note on, this will no further be subdivided, it's an estate lot, and once we get the estate lot permit, they can build a house on it. Right now, it's just a piece of land with 50 feet of frontage.
Okay, uh, at least my take on this, and I realize this thing's starting to get a little bit on the confusing side, the thing is, that one large lot, as it stands right now until they get the special permit, is not a buildable lot.
Correct.
Okay, and there's no notation as to that. We have, I guess I'm gonna say, taken the liberty of, uh, amending the Mylar Plan in this case, uh, and... I'll have to ask everybody else, but if we can simply write in on that proposed estate lot.
I'm okay with that.
Julian, you okay with that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
That's fine, as soon as it gets the special permit, then it becomes an estate lot.
Yes.
Yeah, that, that works. No problem.
Dick, Marilyn, you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm with me.
Okay, any other comments from the rest of the board?
Uh, not that I know of. Nothing involved with the easement or anything else would show up on there, I guess it's okay. All right, I'm all set.
Norm, is that, um, that stone wall back there of any historic value? Do we have to worry about that? I guess maybe it's a question for Julian too.
Oh, you mean the Indian artifacts?
No, I'm just, it's just a question, because I see that, that it goes basically through three lots and into the common driveway, and if it's historical, it can't be taken down, so that, that leaves a huge issue with that access.
No, the interior wall, there's a field on one side, and they want, they wanted to see where that wall was, because the houses, the two lots in the front, they're gonna be up near the street, they want, they're doing this because they want their privacy in the way back, so that has no, that has no historical significance, it's just an interior wall.
Okay, that's all I was looking for, Julian, and I just, I just didn't know, because I know there's a lot of places in Rutland that are quote "historical," but that was just a farming field wall then, I'm guessing.
Oh, yeah, and one side's got a field, the other side is wooded.
Yeah, okay.
Um, excuse me, can I just ask the applicant's name for the record? I didn't catch that.
It's Sylvia and Roman, and you'd have to look at the, you could look at the plan for how to pronounce their last name.
Okay. Thank you.
Sylvia and Roman.
Okay.
Do we have a check number and an amount?
Uh, yes, we have a check for 500, check number 1185. Just a note, we have not received the check for the special permit fee itself.
Yeah, yeah, actually, I think you, I got a call from Lynn Miller today, Dave. I think it, somehow she got it in her box, because she left me a message on why, what is this check for $250?
Yeah, that check for 250 had a reline of Board of Health applications. I gave that to her as the Board of Health Secretary to see if she had any Board of Health applications before that, so one was the P B application for 500 for A and Rs, the other one was 250 for Board of Health, so I... I think you've got the clarification whether or not you had any Board of Health business before the town?
We did, but that was all gone through their process. I know that, I know we did the check for the special permit, because I had to write it separately, and I picked it up, and I put that in there, and so it might have just got filed in the wrong section, but they did the A and R check and then the special permit check, and if we need another check, just tell me the amount and it'll be there tomorrow.
God, I mean, I thought if I only found the two checks, the 500 for A and R, 250 for Board of Health, if you were submitted, I would just probably want to avoid that check and do a new one, I don't know that I have the check for special permit.
Did they write Board of Health in the memo? Maybe they mistakenly wrote Board of Health.
Yeah, they wrote Board of Health in the memo, they said Board of Health application in the memo line.
They made a mistake on that, that shouldn't have gone Board of Health, that should have went to you. I'll, I'll get that.
The 500, not 250.
So the special permit is how much?
Uh, 500.
Is 500, okay. I will tell them, I will get that special permit check to you tomorrow. I'll tell them to send it. No, no problem. The special permit for the estate lot is 500?
Yes, please.
Okay, all right. No problem.
Okay, any further questions, comments or anything?
Motion to approve A and R lot.
Endorse?
Endorse, sorry, I'm used to the word approve.
Yeah, okay.
Endorse A and R plan.
So, Ken.
Okay, anything further? Okay, vote, roll call. Tim?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Norm, aye.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay. We're actually doing stuff here.
You're doing a great job. I'm gonna give you guys all credit, of all the towns that I'm working with, you guys are doing a great, great job keeping things rolling. I've got some towns that they've cut down totally. So, thank you.
You can probably, Julian, thank Mr. Nicholson, he's been a pro advocate to make sure we are able to operate.
Well, he's done a great job, because really, it's, 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 it's gone, you guys have done awesome jobs keeping things rolling. So, thank you guys very much for the people that need you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have a public hearing on an application for an estate lot. And I'm gonna open the hearing, I am not gonna read the entire public hearing notice. This thing has gone from like 10 lines to 30 lines, and basically just summarizing it's a special hearing for a special permit for us in an estate lot at Zero Palmagussett Road.
Where's Zero Palmagussett Road?
Yeah, where is Zero Palmagussett Road? It has no number, apparently.
Isn't that the, the church?
Yeah, right. The public hearing was advertised in the Telegram and Gazette according to the requirements, and we have the application, and we also have the plan. So with that, do we have anyone here to speak on the application?
Yeah, because Norm, I got a lot of questions about this application.
Uh, the applicant was notified of this proceeding, not seeing him on the participant list, um, so I don't know what to say to that.
Well, I, Norm, do you want?
I'll walk you through it if you'd like.
I, I, I'm, I'm basically gonna reject this application, because every line item says single-family dwelling, that's unacceptable.
Well, I was looking at that, but by the same token, this application form is, you know, kind of a catch-all application, uh, and if you just look down some of the, you know, review criteria, uh, you can start with, you know, right at number seven, Part A1, to lessen congestion in streets.
Oh, I don't have a...
You know, it has nothing to do with it. Uh, conserve health, safety from fire, flood, panic and other dangers, uh, come on, provide adequate light and air, uh, you know, adequate provision of drainage parks and open space. So, so, you know, there is no good answer to many, many, many of these.
But yeah, we have another one, I think, for, you know, for the next thing, and it's got a little bit more dignity than just a single family.
Well, yeah, a little bit, I was looking at that one, and, uh, I, oh, I forget what the heck it was, uh...
Oh, it's interesting, Norm, I got comments on that one too, because I read through these. I'm just...
I look at eight, number seven, and it simply says "best we can."
Yeah, I know, that's another one, but, you know, I get the single-family dwelling for stuff like erosion control and stuff like that, but when it comes to removal of trees 12 inches in diameter as part of a special permit, single-family dwelling doesn't cut it. I mean, I get it, this is a catch-all, and some of them, I'm gonna, that's okay, but there are some questions in here that single-family dwelling just doesn't cut it. I mean, the stormwater, if I'm not mistaken, this thing crosses, this, this, um, uh, special permit for the estate lot has a wetlands crossing and a culvert in it. Okay. And, and the culverts, the length of a bridge is defined by DOT. It's on private property, so that's why I didn't make a big issue, I wasn't gonna make a big issue out of it, but my point being is that, you know, single-family dwelling is just not cutting it. I just, I hate to see a form where it's basically just all the way down, and I get it, if the applicant didn't know better, that's why David's here and we have office, or we have email and questions. So I guess I'm, I don't know how to say, I'm not happy with what I see in front of me, and my first thought was this is rejected.
I did request the applicant to supply as much information as was possible given this type of permit, and in addition to that, that they could answer the questions with a bit more of a single-family touring, I encourage that they try to do that. So that permit was made, and I, and this, this is the result of it, it didn't really happen. I will say, however, that it does meet the nuts and bolts for the estate lot itself, it has more than 50 feet of frontage, the structure at the setback line is more than 200 feet, building line, and has more than five acres, so it meets the bare minimum requirements with a particular type of special permit, which is the estate lot, except the general findings of fact aren't there for any and all types of special permit application, but that's, that's, I don't, I don't know what else to say.
Yeah, Dave, I guess my, my problem through Norm is that this applicant basically just threw something together and threw it in front of the town, and I'm not buying it.
How about the people that used to live there a long time ago? What stuff did they bury in the back?
Yeah.
Norm, you remember who lived there?
No, I, no, I don't, and I'm not, I'm not gonna grab my shovel and go out there.
Was the Ford family.
You know, I just, to be, to be perfectly honest with you, I just, you know, I don't, and I can see Tim's point, but, but I don't, I don't even, I don't recall us even using this application with this many questions routinely for an estate lot. Our criteria was, does it have the proper frontage, does, you know, is the, is the width proper at the setback, uh, and does it have the, the proper amount of area?
Yeah, Norm, what I remember when we did, and Dick and Marilyn, you guys, and Sean, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but I remember we used to go through the bylaw for the estate lot and basically use that as a checklist for, to make sure everything was covered for the application.
Okay, and, and none of this stuff, almost virtually none of this is mentioned in the bylaw itself.
That's my problem. So should we do, we do a new form?
In addition, it's a special permit for an estate lot, it's a particular type of special permit, but it's also a special permit from the general requirements for special permits generally, so what you see here, the general finds the fact that apply to any and all special permit situation, um, so that's why it's here, this is kind of a low play purpose, special permit application, should we get commercial projects, we would use the same application in that situation. So anyways, you know, if, so, you know, it's a generalized application, the applicant does meet the nuts and bolts of the state lot, I, I'm able to go into this document when I read the decision, and finesse some of this, try to provide some additional findings, but if the applicant was to get appealed on this, you know, there's less of a security by not having better answers. This is meant to protect the applicant from any potential appeal that may happen, and also to try to write a better decision that is more inclusive, so...
And, and Dave, that's what I was getting at, I mean, if they would have put on here "estate lot," maybe I would have been more, what's the word I'm looking for, more secure, but to put "single-family dwelling" with no reference to an estate lot, other than in the beginning of the application, I'm struggling with this.
Well, most of the file doesn't really apply to an estate lot anyway, Tim.
Yeah, it just, number one, it really doesn't, and, you know, I, I just remember, and I'm not gonna say on Planning Board or anywhere else necessarily, but, you know, if you get, if you get some kind of an application that is meant for applying for a variety of things, very, very frequently, you end up simply putting in N slash A, not applicable.
And I'm okay with that too.
But, no, so...
I don't think we should pub, you know, punish the applicant for a poorly designed form.
I, I agree, Marilyn, and if it meets the bare, if it meets our minimum requirements, I, I have to go, be okay with it.
Perhaps this is something that Dave can put on a sideline or something like that, you know, to say that for an estate lot in the future.
Dick reads my mind.
Yeah. I, I think it's, I think it is something to look at, look at.
I agree with that.
Okay, I'm fine, I just, I just, the problem was, we have two estate lot, and I looked at both forms, and I'm going, oh my God, neither one of them.
I do have one more issue with this one, though. If you look at, and again, I wish we had the applicant here, if you look at the actual plan...
Yeah.
Okay, the, the note underneath where it says "estate lot," it says "estate lot, lot cannot be further divided to reduce its area or to create additional lots without special permit."
That's not right.
No. The, the only change that to me is really needed is you gotta take off the last three words.
Can I, uh, Norm, you guys, you and Dick and, and the rest of the board can tell me if I'm wet behind the ears, but can we continue this till the applicant comes in and we can get this squared away? Cuz there's no applicant. I mean, I would think if you're trying to get an estate lot, you'd wanna show up to the meeting to have a discussion with the board. I mean, I, I, I don't know.
Especially where on the plan itself is something wrong, and he's not here to countersign or whatever or to accept our findings.
Hey, Dave, what's our timeline?
Uh, we'll be having a meeting on the, there's a meeting scheduled for the second week of, second Tuesday of June, and the second, fourth, uh, Tuesday of June, so both meetings in June.
Well, what's, what's the pleasure of the board?
We would like to take this on the 9th of June as a continuance. We would notify the applicant.
I, I, go ahead, Dick, I'm sorry. I was gonna say, my opinion is, we notify the applicant that, uh, we've got questions on this, and we need him to come. Otherwise, it's kid, in my, in my opinion, if you're not gonna show up to answer questions, then, again, this is my opinion only, I'm gonna vote it down. I don't care if it's got the minimum. I, I can't get my questions answered, so.
And especially where it's written on the plan without, and like Norm says, eliminate the last three words, I'd rather have him here to do that, not us.
Or who, who did the plan for him?
One thing on this, this plan has already been recorded at the registry of deeds because previous to this proceeding, an A and R was granted to create lots 1A to 5A and 6A up there and 3A with the A, the one that was recorded has the note, "Proposed estate lots." That's on the one that. But it, uh, but the other language, "No offense," like, "No offense," comes to what it says, that has the language in the special permit that says, "This cannot be further divided." And then there for the language of the decision as a condition, we control versus, versus the language of the plan.
I'd rather see the plan fixed and, and recorded properly.
So, Dave, let me,
Okay, yeah.
Let me ask a question. So, this estate lot, this estate lot section that you got highlighted in blue right now, that wasn't on the o- other plan, correct? That was recorded?
No, it wasn't on the other plan.
Because my problem is, is, is they put this plan with this application. It doesn't say, "Proposed" on it. Um.
Okay, Tim, on that A and R that came through, I wrote in, in front of the words, the big words, "Estate lot." I wrote in the word "proposed" on this plan.
Okay. Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
But this one, so this one they're putting in, they want it, this is part of the estate lot special permit. So, they've got "Estate lot" on here. I got that, but they've gotta fix the wording on the bottom. And Dave, you're saying that, um, we can approve this, and then part of the findings would be that it's gotta be changed?
No, as far as the findings, as far as the findings as a standard condition, uh, it would be, uh, condition numbers, it would be, "Estate lot" has, has language here. So, the condition would be, uh, that the, I would add language to the decision to the effect that such law, the estate lot, shall not be further divided to reduce this area or to create additional building lots. And then this statement is also recited in the deeds for the estate lot.
Okay.
So, in theory, it has to be on the deed and the decision, and that the language of the decision is gonna control, not the language on the plan.
I just.
Somebody's trying to be sneaky. What happens then? He pulls out the plan.
This gets black, this gets back to Bryce Lemon, and. I- is there any chance, you know, we could, I, I, I guess we don't need to extend it. I'm fine with that. But can we tell the applicant before we sign this that, to get the plan correct with the correct wording?
Yes, as a condition, I would say, yes. I would say, as a condition, if the board felt strongly that the board would like to see a new plan and recorded at the registry with certain language, then I think that's a reasonable condition.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
All right, I'm good.
Okay, anything else regarding this special permit? And obviously, we don't have the applicant here. Uh, ju- just a, a li- a little side note, you know, with these proceedings, you know, by Zoom, uh, I, I'm at least a little hesitant, uh, a- as to can we actually require an applicant to be present at a Zoom meeting?
That's a good legal question.
We've had other people on.
Oh, yeah, they have, but can we require it?
Well, here's a prime example.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, it's a question. That's all it is.
Yeah.
Well, I say, yeah.
Do we require them to be there in person? I mean, they, uh, they're not required to show up for their own public hearing. I mean, it would behoove them to.
Yes.
But as an environment, they're, they're not required.
Yeah, you know, a- and in, in this case, to be perfectly honest with you, wi- with our concerns on this, uh, I, I would even wondering if, uh, you know, send them our questions and get a written response from them.
Okay. So, we would continue with that, huh, Norm?
No, not necessarily. Th- th- these are just random thoughts coming out of my little pea brain.
No, 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 but then the, the, but you, to your point, if we send them questions, that could go to part of the, the, uh, findings that David would be putting together, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Could make a note that the, uh, answers could not be single dwelling.
Yeah.
Uh, well, that's one of them. Well, let's, let's, uh, leave it for, uh, and we'll let Dave, either send her a letter out there and ask him to, uh, fix it.
Well, don't we have a timeline on, uh, uh, special permits? I mean, do, do we have enough time to continue this to the next meeting before we vote on it?
Uh, yes, yes, the hearing was held on a timely basis, given the executive order of the Commonwealth waiving the timeline to have a hearing. So, there's no issue there. The only issue is that the decision.
It just kinda backs things up a little bit.
I don't know.
Ninety days after the close of the hearing. But we don't have any constructive ground issues, is what I'm saying.
Yeah. Is that correct?
If we close the hearing, is that?
Could vote this tonight, because the board can see that the estate lot meets the bare minimum requirements for the estate lot. Uh, the board seems to have concerns with some of the findings, but thinks that they're general. Uh, um, with conditions indicating that a new plan must be recorded at the registry with the change of the note, and any other language of what we'd like to have, uh, we would condition, you could condition it accordingly, and vote it tonight, or if you had concerns and you wanted to have the findings of fact beefed up or have the applicant answer any of the questions, then you may wanna continue it.
Let me, let me ask one more question, because I don't remember, and I don't have any of my documents in front of me. If we close the hearing, does that start another clock?
Yes, it stops the 90-day clock to write a decision, but 90 days is not gonna be an issue in this case to write a decision.
I'm okay with voting on this tonight, then, and then, uh, working on, letting Dave get them questions, and then working on the decision based upon what we get back for questions, for answers. I'm good with that.
I'm sorry. What are the questions again?
Well.
Well, nu- number one is to change the notation on the plan.
Yeah.
And, well, I, I, I don't know. Anybody else can raise anything you want to. I, I just, I don't have a major problem with the application itself. You know, it's, it's, let's put it this way, the, the application doesn't make us look good, to be perfectly honest with you.
Yeah, okay, let's just, I, I guess have them change the plan, and, uh, let's move on.
Well, I, I suggest that maybe we'll let Tim take a look at the plan and maybe word it different here and there. Not being so.
Vary a few of the answers.
Correct.
There's a person down at the end of the line here on my screen. Is that perhaps the owner?
Let me look, Marilyn, good point. Gregory Goldsmith.
Look back.
Nope, I don't see any Goldsmiths here.
No.
Nope, I remember he came in with Julian last time, Norm. Or no, maybe it was Mark Elbeck. Well, he came in with one of the two.
Yeah.
Seems like Elbeck's already got two houses going up down there.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah.
All right, well, I guess, uh, uh, motion to, in this case, it's approve the estate lot, not endorse it, correct?
Prove the special permit.
Prove the special permit for the estate lot.
How sexy.
With, and with conditions to be added later?
Yeah, Dick, thank you.
Two moves.
Okay, any discussion on that? Okay, this requires four fifths, so, uh, all in favor, by roll call. Sean?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Norm, aye. And we have another estate lot at 134 Wachusett Street.
Yeah, this is the one where I had some issues, too, Norm. But let's go through this.
Okay, well, once again, uh, I'm gonna open up the public hearing. Uh, I'm not gonna read the whole meeting notice, uh, but it is an application, uh, by Robert Long, Indiana Long, for a special permit for an estate lot at 134 Wachusett Street. Uh, and the land is in the, the R60 zoning district, and, uh, this was advertised in the telegram according to the requirements we're posting. So, do we have the applicant here?
Uh, I'm Kevin Jarvis, Jarvis Lanzavalle, representing Indiana.
Oh, very good.
Uh, uh, ju- just, just listened to the first meeting about the forms. I, I agree with you. It's a, it's a tough form to, uh, to fill out based on a single-family residence. It's a catch-all form, and not very easy to fill out, and I can understand why you'd have some questions on there, but, you know, it's, it's a tough form, let's just say that. But getting back to the lot, you know, it meets the criteria. A hundred thirty-six feet of frontage we have, which is above the minimum, plus, um, we have, uh, over 10 acres of land, which, you know, is o- overdoubles the minimum of, of required for an estate lot.
Okay.
Oh.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna, I wanna start out by one, one more time, one thing, okay? Oh, okay, sorry about that. No, I missed something. I'm, nope, 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 no, no question. No question.
I was gonna go down and see if I could find that iron pipe on the left-hand side, up above, uh, the W in Wachusett, but I never made it today.
You, you were gonna try to find it. There's a flagging over there by the tree, so, by the rail trail you're talking about?
Of course, yes.
Yeah, it's, it's there. It's, it, there's a little piece of old flagging. It's still there. You would've found it.
Okay. You mean I didn't take it out? Last time I plowed snow there?
No, you, it's in the woods. You would, you would have to go, uh, you'd have to do, work pretty hard to get that one out.
Well, okay, well, that's good, then. Uh, because I remember as a, a young child, right, right in that area, there was an elevated place where the empty coal cars. And that, and that was finally taken down when I was about seven years old.
Was that ever an active, an active rail?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it was?
The 38 Hurricane killed it. A very good friend of mine rode the last two freight cars without any engine, all the way from Glenwood Road all the way down to their reservoir, Wachusett reservoir.
Did he push it?
Had all the roads blocked and everything else, but, yeah, he had a hell of a time. But that's, that's, not here. I'm sorry to, but it's always been interesting on that.
Right.
Kevin, I do got one question for you.
Sorry.
That, uh, culvert crossing, that's on private property, correct?
Um, what we're proposing, it's gonna be on this estate lot. It's gonna be private property, yes.
The town would have no, uh, jurisdiction for that, correct, for repairing it or doing anything?
That is correct.
That's all I wanted. I'm good, then.
All right.
Everything else is good, I've seen. And I, and I agree, Dick, the, uh, this form was 10 times better than the last one. I mean, there were some questions, but, but, um, I, 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 I just had some things, steps will be taken. That's sort of, "At best we can." I get it. I do.
I, uh, I don't know if you guys can split up forms for a commercial. This seems like more commercially used than it would be for residential use.
Yeah, I think, I think, Kevin, what we're gonna do is, we're probably gonna come up with a, try to come up with a form, at least I'm, if I have to, I'll help out, which will be more specific to estate lots. Since those seem to be the big hitters now in Rutland.
Right.
Best set precedent for the writing.
Yeah, that, that was my fear, Sean, is that if we let a couple of these go through, and we don't try to correct them, that we'll get this jammed down our throat as precedent.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll do the best we can.
Yeah.
We're still learning.
Yeah, I'm.
Uh, are we all every sing? We're all like, learning every single day.
Yeah.
So, Kevin, you're not the one that's gonna be living there, right?
Well, and I agree with, like, number seven, avoid an increase in peak, peak hour stormwater flow from the site 110 and 100-year storm events. That has nothing to do with private property being built.
Right, yeah, and some of these questions, quite honestly, would be taken care of with other uses, like DEP or, you know,
Yeah.
or, or even conservation for that matter.
Well, we, Kevin, we would, that, that number seven would be, would be more, um, appropriate for, it's like when, uh, Dave Lucier was building a, uh, uh, a, a storage facility with parking on it.
Oh, yep, yep.
That, that, that makes sense, then, for a special permit, but.
Certainly with lighting.
I get it.
It's certainly with lighting, too, as well, man, or something in that situation.
Yeah, so, okay, I'm, uh, I, I don't have any more questions.
No, but Kevin, you're not, you're not buying us peace of property and living there, are you?
Well, my, well, actually, my wife, my wife owns the property.
So, you just love the smell, don't you?
Yeah, it's a, it's a little pudgeing today. I have to, I have to agree, so fortunately, it's not all year round.
Yep. That, Norm, that's Randy. George.
Oh, okay.
Oh, it's Randy out spreading today?
Yes, today was the day.
He was the other day.
All right.
He's laying it on thick.
And I'll just think of, uh, Dick, and I'm, I know I'm sidetracking, think of those new houses on the other side of, uh, of Wachusett Street that's building, up against his farm.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, love it.
I would say those windows won't be open in the, uh, spring or fall much.
Never. Never.
Anyhow, sorry.
Alright.
Do we need a motion to approve the special permit with appropriate conditions?
Yeah, and you know, I was just thinking, I don't know if we can go back and do this, but we never closed the last public hearing.
Oh, we voted, ah, yeah, we better, we better before we get through, well, we already opened this one up, so should we close this one, vote on it, and then go back and close the other one?
Yes. I heard something in the background there somewhere.
Well, let me, let me rephrase my motion then, Norm, motion to close this public hearing.
Which one is that? Wachusett Street?
Yes.
Uh, Wachusett Street, motion to close Wachusett Street Public Hearing.
Second.
Discussion. In favor, roll call. Tim?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Norm, aye. Now, entertain a motion to approve the special permit.
Uh, I guess, I'll, I'll let Sean do it.
No, yeah, I'll make a motion, so moved to, uh, for the special permit.
With conditions?
There will be the standard conditions.
Yep, yeah, I'm fine with that, okay. Second.
Anything further? Okay, in the vote, roll call. Sean?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Norm, aye. Now, a motion to close the public hearing on the estate lot for zero, uh, Palmigus Road.
So moved.
Second, yeah.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion on that one. In favor, roll call again. Let me see, what order this time? Marilyn?
Aye.
Uh, Dick?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Norm, aye. Wow.
Do you, everyone's upset with me?
I believe so.
Okay, I also wanna agree with Julian, you got, everyone's doing a great job here, keep it up. I know it's tough, but doing a great job.
Kevin, thanks.
Alright, have a great night, everyone. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay, next agenda item, Maple Hill Subdivision Administration. Uh, we do have a report from May fifteenth from Quinn Engineering, uh, they were installing drainage. Uh, all I know is the, the Water Department had a water main break down in that area today. I don't know if that had anything to do with this or not.
It was definitely because of the blasting, Norm.
It was over by, actually, it was over by my house.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but it was caused because of the blasting in Maple Hill. That's if I was the DPW chief, that's what I'd say.
Okay. Uh...
I didn't lose water, so that was, that was good, but, uh, part of my street did. You know, my, my whole neighborhood, you know, it, being pretty old, we've had like fifteen water main breaks in the past three years. It's, I mean, it's unreal.
Okay, I don't know, uh, I don't think it's really too much to comment on the Quinn report.
No, it's just the, uh, it's just the rest of the stuff, Norm, I'm struggling with.
Yeah, uh...
Where's my cash?
We did get...
How many people have been down, you know, I have not been to Maple Hill, and I've gotta make a trip down there to take a look at it and see what's going on.
Could you let me know when you do, Dick, if you don't mind if I go with you?
I have no problem.
Yeah, I haven't been down there right, recently myself. Uh, we did get a reply, I don't think, uh, Dave probably didn't have a chance to get it online at all, uh, from Cle on several items that he asked about. Uh, Dave, you, have you had a chance to look at it?
Excuse me, guys?
Cle's email. Cle sent an email at like four fifty-
Just tell me, tell me what you're asking again, please.
Yeah, I, I saw the email.
At four fifty-six or something like that, four forty-five?
Yeah.
Yes, I have that email, I'll pull it up right now.
Okay.
Should not be sending that email.
Yep.
There it is.
Yeah, this came in, uh, the only new content here is really old content, this item here, real connection. This safe PDF that the board saw last November.
Well, it looks like, Dave, if I'm not mistaken, and Norm, that he's gonna get the eight K to us for Maple Hill. That doesn't seem to be a problem.
I actually saw Mr. Blair at six twenty today, tonight, he came up, he dropped the check off for eight thousand dollars.
But this Bryce Estates, um, is, and maybe this is for Tamika, is there really five K left in that account?
Actually, I don't, I don't remember off the top of my head
Okay.
on what the balance is, but it's not a significant balance.
Yeah, 'cause he says there's five thousand dollars left in that account.
Hmm, yeah, I can definitely confirm that for you guys, um, the next time I can get up there, but, but yeah, it's definitely dwindling. I've paid a few things out to Quinn for it.
Okay. All I know, and, oh, I guess, when we get to the individual letters, that's all my comments, 'cause I know we're talking about Maple Hill right now.
Okay, so that's the money on Bryce Estates. Next thing he says is, uh, he attached the rail trail connection plan that has grade lines. I did take a brief look at it. Uh, I don't know where the rest of you guys are at, uh, I just, I don't know, I, I'm still just thinking that I'd kinda like to see it graded. Get, be able to get some eyes on it.
Yeah, Norm, I'm with you on this one. I've seen too many variations of this, does that make sense?
You know, just like I say, it, it's just, it... Right now, that should not be a hard thing for him to do.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Where things, things are nice and dry.
We haven't had any rain either, Norm.
Right, things are nice and dry. I'm not saying that he has to, you know, absolutely finish the connection right now, but, but at least to get the grade right there so that we can see, you know, are they gonna be walking on the slope going into the detention pond, or? You know?
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, because that, that, that's a relevant statement to what they said about safety. I mean, if you lose your footing and you've got a one-foot space before you hit a slope, that's dangerous.
Yeah. Also, I, I don't know, but if you remember, Ed, I don't know, was that last meeting, the meeting before, someone had mentioned that, uh, they might try to persuade Blair to put a fence on the part of that trail that is right next to the detention pond.
Yeah.
Haven't heard a thing whether they have moved on that.
Norm, you're just talking about like an L-section, right, that goes around that L-section of the footpath, and that's it?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, I, I wouldn't have a problem with that, 'cause it's...
I, I think we agreed that the planning board wouldn't have any problem, I just don't know whether they have done anything.
Okay.
Uh, and, I'm, I'm not sure if that, if that is something for the planning board to take on either.
Can I ask one other question? Do, the, the plan that Dave's got pulled up, am I seeing correctly that, that there, that, that lot sixty-seven R septic system goes into the detention pond? Am, am I seeing that right?
I don't think so.
'Cause there's a line that crosses underneath the rail trail, and that can't be part of the, what's the word?
Those, those houses are all on sewer.
Then what the heck is that, 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 that line that goes, that comes up into sixty-seven R, goes to that, it looks like farming fi, or, you know, rows of something, and then goes out over to the detention pond?
I'm thinking it's likely an infiltration gallery. So, some part of whatever he has to catch for the rainwater off the roofs.
Okay.
I don't know that.
Oh, and so that's, that's basically getting tied into the sewer system, then?
No.
Well, it ties back to the point that's out on the road, is that the, is that maybe the stormwater lines then?
That would be to the stormwater.
Okay, I'm good with that. I just was trying to, I was like, how the heck does that go through somebody's property? I'm confused, but you know what, it's not the first time. Okay.
Uh, let's see, we need to call that letter back up again. Uh, Dave, can you get that letter back up on the screen?
Yeah, I'm working on it.
Which one, Norm, the Maple Hill or the Bryce Lemons?
The, 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 the latest email from Blair.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, 'cause it says, the, the second part of it says, as far as the money is required for Bryce Estates, if you recall, when you asked me about, there were approximately five K left in the account, I don't think there was a quick turnaround required on that, but if, but I will requisition the money and should have it there next week, so, it sounds to me like he's gonna refill the account on, on Bryce Estates, so, I'm good with that.
I was looking for, what, what's the next item down?
It says, I've also attached the rail trail connection plan that has the grade lines on it, but if you have looked at the location in the field, it should be pretty evident to what extent you need grading.
Yeah, okay.
Let me know if you, you need anything further, I'll be happy to get it to you.
So...
A finished copy of the, of the work been done.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, Dick. How about what it's actually gonna look like?
Isn't it about a year ago that we started putting time limits on it?
Well, yeah, but I don't think that, yeah.
Yeah, it was last September.
Yeah, it was supposed to be done last September, and then the sidewalks were supposed to be in by June, July? We, we put two numbers out there, one was for, um, the phase one sidewalks, and the other was for the final, um, rail trail, um, portion.
Yeah, well...
It's obviously not happening, but that's okay, because without this being done, you guys can tell me if I'm wrong, but, but he can't go, come to town to get these roads approved until this is finished, correct?
That's correct.
So, I'm good with that, he still owns the roads.
Yeah. Uh, the next item on that email was about the conservation restriction, as I remember.
Yeah, it says, Norm, as far, I'll read it to, I'll read it to the, uh, board, as far as the conservation restriction, I believe you're making a mistake, plus you just gave one to Mike Gasperoni, and you won't give one to me. And it said, and it says in the law that you can, five exclamation points. Your lawyer is not correct, and easement lasts forever, but I am not going to argue anymore and send it off to the state and see if they approve it, because I don't think it meets their criteria, it's too small. In parentheses. Thanks, Cle.
Okay. That, last part of that last sentence, when I was reading it, "I'm not gonna argue anymore, send it off to the state and see if they approve it." I'm not sure if he's saying that he will, or he wants us to.
"Not going to argue anymore." Yeah, see, that's, that's an incomplete sentence if I was a English teacher. It, it, it should be, "argue anymore," period. "I will send it off to the state and see if they approve it," is how it probably should've been worded, but, but without that "I" there, Norm, who sends it off to the state?
There you go.
Um, so, I guess maybe we need to ask, well, I guess I'm gonna ask the question, is it our responsibility to send it off, or is it the applicant's?
I believe it's the applicant's.
Then I guess, Norm, through you, should, should we have David send him an email saying that, uh, please, on your, one, two, three, on your fifth paragraph email, please go ahead and send it off and, uh, keep us informed of the state's decision?
But, did we, did we vote?
We voted, Dick, to, to leave it alone.
We, we voted to require the state conservation restriction.
Yeah, conservation constriction, correct.
Right.
But that's not what he's saying he's sending, is it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, he, he's gonna send the conservation restriction that
He wrote up.
That, that he wrote up, that, that our legal counsel is saying probably won't pass muster. But he's gonna send it off, or, either he, he is going to, or he wants us to send it off to the state anyway.
Well, see, we voted for the, the real CR, and him sending the, the other one is not right.
Well, if the state approves it...
No, no, we asked for the real CR.
Oh, we're just gonna get into a legal battle, because I don't remember approving Gasperoni's that way, but maybe I wasn't at the meeting, or I just don't remember it.
But I do.
And we did?
Yes.
But is this a different application?
Shocked, because nothing ever was said about the thirty-year thing.
Okay. So we did a little bit more digging this time and found out more information. It happens.
Yeah.
So...
And this time Dave is, you know, on a side that, I think back then, Dave wasn't around at the time.
Yep, we didn't have, we didn't have the skill set we needed, so, okay, shame on us. Sorry, Cle.
Well, yes and no, I mean, we were looking for something different than the but with the same kind of teeth, but allowing property owners to do more with their property.
Oh, I see, okay.
Something to, yeah. Oh, it says, "Your internet connection is unstable." Or they're referring to me.
If I may, let me get this straight, so, Maple Estates is not going to be an open space design?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, anything further on this email?
Only thing, Norm, I think we should seriously clarify with Cle how, just because, I'm trying to be politically correct on this. I wanna make sure our I's are dotted or T's and crossed and that he understands that he, as an applicant, he needs to send off the conservation restriction that we approved for that property to the state.
Well, we did not.
I could just cut in for a second. Um, the board did not approve a conservation restriction per se. The board approved a conservation restriction approvable by the Commonwealth in accordance with the statutes in the zoning, in the zoning bylaw. So if you're looking for clarification, you're looking for clarification, it's gonna be the one that's called for in the zoning bylaw?
Which is the regular conservation restriction.
Yes, Dave, I'm sorry, I didn't word that correctly. What you said is correct.
And you want clarification that he's gonna do that on his initiative? He's not expecting the planning board to do anything else for him requiring a conservation restriction.
Correct.
Okay. I will do that.
Thanks, because his last, his last sentence, um, is a, it doesn't have an I or a U or a planning board or anything in there as a pronoun. So it doesn't really tell who's gonna do it. And I didn't wanna.
Having this conversation with Mr. Blair, is there anything you want on the real trail? Would you like him to go ahead and build it and then provide something after the fact? Or what, what's the pleasure of the board?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Get her done.
Yeah, that's what, you know, it's like, you know, get, get, get that fill in place and get it, you know, at least rough graded to what it's gonna look like.
And I, and Norm, I guess the other thing I would put in, if we're gonna tell him, tell him that get that done, I'd put in there a comment about, have you spoke to the, um, owners about a, um,
Partial fence?
Yeah, partial fence. I, I, I know we're, it's not our responsibility, but I think we need to do a little bit of advocacy here.
Well, I'm sorry to interject. My name's Maria Armakis from sixty-nine Woodside Ave.
Yes.
Um, we haven't gotten any information about the fence, but we did get an email from Cle and I believe George, you're on it, Mr. George. Um, and it was addressed on May fifteenth at around three thirty PM. Hi all, I'm using these emails to make you aware that there are children swimming and waiting in the detention pond. My excavator operator just called me to tell you. They may not be from the neighborhood. We are telling them to get out of there because it's dangerous. If they're your children, please tell them not to play in there. Thank you, Cle. Now, I'm, here I am again. I'm told that it's not a dangerous place, but now people are, other than me, are labeling it dangerous. So I'm sorry if I keep advocating about a fence around the retention pond, but it's really necessary. Kids are going in there whether we like it or not. I mean, I don't know what more information we need to kind of bring up.
So.
Well, I'd love to say a lot of things, but I'm not.
Well, Maria and Norm and the board just tell me if I'm wet behind the ears. I, I think it's, it's gotta be a negotiation now because he's got orders of condition to build this subdivision and there's no conditions for putting up a fence.
That's correct.
So that's why I'm saying, I, 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 Maria, I understand, I, I, for the safety issue. That's why I thought this, somebody from the, cause it was brought up in the last meeting, was gonna talk with Mr. Blair about the fence. So, um, and it doesn't look like it's happened. So that's why I was saying, and we're sending him an email. We might wanna just remind him that either he or somebody from the subdivision needs to have that talk with him.
Yeah, if I may, I don't feel that we can require him to put up a fence around that.
No, we can't. But I, I, I would go with Tim's suggestion.
Can I just chime in here for a second? My name's Sean Mead from seventy-three Woodside. And I notified, uh, Cle that we got the approval to put up a fence and the only reply back I got was great. I haven't heard anything else beyond that.
You had the approval to put up a fence?
Or the, the okay, I guess, and there wouldn't be an issue from you guys if a fence did go up along the rail trail side or around, I guess, by that. That the planning board would not have an issue.
That is, that is correct.
Yes. But I think the way you worded it, if, if I know our builders in Rutland, his assumption is you're putting it up.
He came to me directly and said he would have no issue if it was okayed by you guys to put up the fence.
Oh, okay.
He came to me.
Do we need to send him a, a letter then, Norm, saying that, uh, or maybe?
Well, yeah, I, 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 it's not our, it's, I don't think, it's, I don't think we should send him a letter because he said, pressing saying that we're requiring him to set up a fence. He wants to go ahead and put up a fence. Tell me and see if he'll put up a fence.
The, the letter was. The letter would simply be that we have no objection to him putting up a fence.
Yeah, that's. And then we just have to get the plans updated to basically show where the fence was gonna be. So it'll be in the official plans.
And the gate so that the, uh, if the town has to go in there to do something or the homeowners or whatever.
Well, Norm, or Dick, I wasn't, again, I'm not, and I'll let, uh, Mr. Mead and Maria, I'm not advocating fencing the whole thing off. I was thinking around the rail trail, basically up to the, uh, the wetlands.
I would agree.
That's what I was thinking. Which would still allow access from Woodside Road to get in there if they had to do any cleaning.
Split rail fence or something like that, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, not, not a chain link around the, the hole. Firstly, I'm against, I'm against putting fences around them. Or an eyesore.
I'm sorry, it's Maria again. I'll say sixty-nine Woodside Ave. I, I hear the eyesore, but my problem is, is an eyesore and safety and kids dying.
If you're asking, you're asking the government to take care of your, your children, it says, which personally, I, I don't, I don't wanna want the town telling me what, besides obeying the law, what my kids need to do.
No, I understand. I guess my, I have two questions. First, I know someone from the town board was going to talk to Holden to see what, if the DP, if the DPW is in charge of the pond?
Yep, that was me and I haven't got a response from them yet.
Okay.
So.
All right, and second, I guess my, my question, my thing is, is, you know, I go around Holden and they have a fence all the way around the retention pond. I don't understand, unless you're traveling here and going, wow, that's an eyesore. I, I, I'm sorry, I, I find it really, I, I, I disagree. And I guess I just wanna be on the books to say I disagree with you. An eyesore and safety and is just two different things.
And responsibility is yours to teach your kid how to swim. And to keep, you know, to respect the state of the pond.
Yeah, my kids asked me about cleaning the area. Yeah.
Once they put a fence around Long Pond, then we'll go for it.
But Long Pond is part of Rutland's property, isn't it?
No.
It's a community that takes care of the.
It's state property.
It's state property, okay. So what's the difference between Long Pond and the retention pond that we have? I feel like there's two different things. One is a state pond that's actually a pond and this one is made out of sewer water.
Well, yeah, see, it's, it's not a pond.
Whatever, rainwater, street water, whatever is going in there. It is not a manmade pond that came from the state park. This is someone that made the Rutland lands drain into there. This is a manmade pond.
Do you see a fence around Molten Pond? Do you see a fence around, uh, Bigelow Pond? Do you see a fence around Comet Pond?
I hear what, I hear what you're saying. I totally hear what you're saying. Those are ponds that have been here forever, correct?
You've been on all ponds, you don't see it. Never mind.
Those are manmade ponds.
Maria, can I ask you, ask you a question? Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you.
Oh, so what about, what Norman and I've been talking about, about saying that to the, to the, uh, to Mr. Blair that putting a fence around basically the rail trail path on that drainage site up to the, uh, wetlands, is that acceptable or are you looking for more than that? That's what I was trying to figure out and I haven't really figured that out yet.
I guess, um, I guess it's, it's kind of, for me, I find it really, it's just we're going around in circles and until we get information from maybe the Holden, how the Holden community gets it, maybe then. But for me, I feel like, I, I hear what you're saying. You guys are anti-fence. I'm on the record saying it's a safe risk and in the future, when something happens, I'll be the one that said, hey, town, remember that fence I talked about? I mean, there's nothing else I can say.
Well, I'm, I'm asking, you haven't, i- i- if Holden, and again, I'll get that information one way or another, but, um, Norm and I had suggested of, of, of a fence basically keeping people off of the rail trail and out of the drainage edement, which isn't around the entire easement, but it's up to the wetland. So it basically from Woodside Road all the, all the way around that five foot path until it comes up to the, um, wetlands. Is that acceptable or thought? Or do you want the entire drainage edement fenced off all the way around it?
Not only one. It's two ponds.
Correct.
So I guess for my sanity, I just wanna be on the record saying that I think that a, a fence, just like you fence in a pool, I think that there should be a fence around the whole thing.
Okay.
And that's just for my personal opinion and as a taxpayer, that's how I feel.
I was trying to get what you were looking to get done.
I get it's an eyesore and I get all that, but when you get an email from Cle saying it's a dangerous, a dangerous place to be and kids are waiting in it, that's a problem. Whether they go in through the side or whether they go up and over, it's still a problem. So I don't know.
Okay.
This is Carly Mead from seventy-three Woodside. The whole root of this issue all stems back from we are responsible for the detention pond. We still haven't clarified whether we're responsible for maintaining it. If a child drowns in it, is that gonna be falling on our shoulders? Because we are supposed to have insurance for this, per this, this trust from, from Blair. We still haven't even figured out what we're responsible for. You said last time that we should be in no way, shape or form responsible for maintaining the detention pond, but per legal documents, we are. Once it gets turned over, that's on our shoulders. So legally, if a child falls in there and we're responsible for maintaining it, who does that fall back on?
So, Norm, was it ever last, at one of the last meetings, I thought we had discussed about what if the homeowners association was pulled out and it all went to the town of Rutland?
Well, we can't do that.
Yeah.
You can't, we can't pull the, the, the ma- the maintenance of the pond out?
It's, it's part of our subdivision regulation.
Yeah, we can't, we can't violate our subdivision regulations without changing the zoning bylaw.
Yeah, we can't retroactively change that.
But I, I, I don't, I don't recall any other subdivisions being responsible for their detention ponds.
Actually, all of them are.
Well, where, where did it come from? That's what, I tried to look it up and I don't find it where it says detention ponds. And in the past, you know, I remember Gary talking about, you know, he needed to make sure easements were there to get in there to take care of them.
Yeah, that was over on, um, uh, off of Palm Augusta, what was, um?
Bear Hill.
Bear Hill West, I guess, or not Bear Hill. What's the one on the other side? That Lenny built?
Brunel.
Oh, Brunel West, thank you. Yeah, he, uh, Gary had to go into a couple of those places cause there were fences in the way and, uh, and sheds that he had to have moved.
Correct.
And just, just for the record, this is Sean from seventy-three Woodside. It's section thirty-five of the zoning bylaws that turns over the maintenance and liability to the homeowners associations.
But how, how, how did that happen? Where the other ones didn't? It should not be, you know, some have it and some don't.
Dick, I just don't think it's been enforced. So. I'm not saying that's right or wrong, I just don't think it's been enforced.
I don't think any of these HOAs, I'm, should we go ask any of the residents that has a HOA attached to their property? I bet you not, nobody besides paying any type of fee has had any type of penalty assigned to them. Not like they're not allowing flag or allowing different types of plants in your yard, um.
That's something that we've gotta look into. Or there could be a lawsuit.
Well, Norm, you could tell me if I'm wrong, but do we need to talk to, um, Chief Buckley and, and get his opinion on what, what's he gonna do for enforcement?
Well.
Just so we know from a subdivision bylaw standpoint, cause.
You, you know, it's, it's kinda one of these things where, you know, if, if there is some kind of a catastrophic failure, you know, certainly, yes, they're gonna go in. Uh, as far as regular maintenance is concerned, uh, to the best of my knowledge, it's just not done, period.
That is correct.
Okay, at, you know, at all. Uh, the, you know, the, the one concern, I forget her name now, that, that mentioned this. I, I have absolutely no idea about liability, you know, in, in terms of an accident at one of these detention ponds. Uh, I als- also, I don't know if that should be a responsibility of the planning board to find out or whether it's actually may, maybe a responsibility of those homeowners to find out.
Yeah, I.
I don't know.
The only thing I would suggest was, and, and this was for the board, it wasn't specifically for Bryce Lemon, just to get a, a better understanding of what Chief Buckley moving forward, because you know, he's made some changes on how he does things in town of what his expectations was for some of these subdivisions that have homeowners agreements. You know, I, I, I don't know, it was more of just a, a general conversation with him to see what his thought process is.
I would even add, if be so, but, I mean, to reach out to Gary. to reach out to Gary, to, to ask that, you know, because he was with us for so long. What, maybe what he, if anybody has any way of contacting him.
Yeah, but I think Sean, Chief Buckley is, has a different view on things than Gary does, or Gary did.
If, I'm just looking at whatever set precedent.
I don't think that's going to matter for Chief Buckley. I've had a few conversations with him about private sewers, and I don't think we'll be seeing those coming through anymore.
So. No, it's, it's our present DPW chief we want to talk with.
Yeah.
Look, if, if, if Clea wants to put a fence up around it, that's, that's his purview. It's up, it's something he's going to have to discuss with, with the property owners.
The, the other thing is if, if there is a fence put up around that, then the homeowners are responsible for maintaining that fence too.
Oh, so you mean like painting and any rust, rusting and stuff like that?
Yeah, snowmobile crashes through it, needs to be repaired.
Okay. Uh, before we get too far out there, can we, can we move on?
Yeah, yeah, I wanted to talk about this, the agricultural.
Well, first, before you get there, I want to know about Quinn and Bryce Lemon, Seven Oakley Drive situation.
Well, I saw the reports that he, that he went up there, but he said no work's being done.
Now, this particular one says here, uh, should be evaluated by an experienced geotechnical engineer, which he is not. So did somebody go up there to check this out? And has Will given an, an occupancy permit to that house? Hopefully not.
So tired of this.
Didn't we get a letter from Blair regarding the retaining wall in back of that house?
Was it after May fifteenth?
I think it was before. It's, and it's not in this packet, but.
Well, is somebody living in that house?
I have no idea.
Well, we ought to make sure Will doesn't let anybody get there until we're certain that that wall was put in properly.
If it's above eight feet, doesn't, or is it eight feet?
Uh, can I just chime in, Sean from 73 Woodside? That house has an occupancy permit and is occupied at this time.
I'm so tired of this.
It's the one with the big block wall along the back, correct?
That's correct.
Yep, it's over eight feet.
Oh, yeah.
So, Dave, do you recall getting a letter from, from Blair about the construction of that rock wall?
Right, um, as I understand it, with Quinn, as the board knows, because of the COVID pandemic, the ordinary party who was reviewing Bryce Lemon on a regular basis is no longer doing that. I think in this case here, uh, it may not affect coordination. Because as I understand it, Seven Oakley is also known as Lot Thirty-four. And if the board recalls from the last meeting, the board received in the packet a letter from a professional engineer, because the, the point being Lot Thirty-four is Seven Oakley. So I think, I think the issue's been addressed by this prior letter, day four fifteen. And I think that the reviewers are trying to coordinate, and something may have, may have been missing. But Seven Oakley is Lot Thirty-four, and we drove a letter from an engineer on this matter, indicating that there's no issue.
Yeah, but I, I guess, Norm, what I'm looking for is, if I'm not mistaken, anything over eight feet, we need an engineer plan. Have we gotten that?
It's what they have in this document. I have a letter from a, a professional engineer who has evaluated the wall, who has done the very thing that you seek.
What, a plan? Yeah, but do I have a plan showing how the wall was constructed? I don't care if he says it's okay.
It's a building permit, as far as I understand it. And I further understand that the building commissioner is aware of the situation and has reviewed this. But I understand that he has a plan of a wall in the file for this particular property.
But.
Would you please get a copy of that to us?
Yeah, because.
Um, yeah, we'll talk to the building commissioner and see if you can produce that.
Well, hold on a second. My understanding, and somebody can tell me if I'm wrong. If there's an eight-foot wall built in a subdivision, I don't care if it's on private property or not, it's part of the subdivision plan. It's not part of the private property, or am I wrong?
If it's on private property, I, I, I don't, I don't believe it is. I, I don't believe it's considered part of the subdivision plan.
Okay, good enough, I'll drop it.
How do you know? How do you know that it isn't part of the subdivision?
I, I don't know, I don't believe so.
The purpose of the subdivision would be to allow lots to be created in accordance with the open space plan. This was called out by Quinn, by them being precautious where it does not appear to be in actual, perfect condition of the special permit or the subdivision. Because Quinn was being cautious, the building commissioner outreach had the wall installed according to a civil engineer's plan, with the civil engineer testing that the wall was built per the specifications.
All right, Dave, I'm going to go to what Sean says. Fire beware. I'm done.
But I would like to see, see it, because in the future, if we ever have anything else like this, and trust me, you guys have been on the other side where they cleaned the logs off of it, you're going to see some more of this happening.
Yep, I think you're right, Dick.
So I just want something on hand so that we can see and be a, a little bit more judgmental in the future.
Yeah, all right, good enough. I'm sorry for, I just, bridges and walls are my pet peeve.
Okay, anything more with Bryce Lemon?
So this is Carly from 73 Woodside. So what do you want us to, what do you want us to do next? Do you want us to talk to Clea about the fence? What else, what else can we do about this?
I, you know, I, I would, well, there are two things that I would suggest. Number one, yes, talk to, talk to Clea Blair, see if you can come to a mutual understanding for him to construct a partial fence. Uh, that, that's number one. And on the liability issue, I am going to suggest, uh, and I'm just thinking of what the planning board would likely have to do. I, I, I would suggest that you try to maybe get a few of your homeowners together and get a legal opinion from a lawyer. If we were going to try to do that, uh, we would have to go through, at the very least, our town administrator. And just the fact of us doing it could put the town in some, some kind of a, of a bad situation. I, I would fear.
We're getting involved in private issues, it's not.
It, it, it is a private issue. And, and as, as such, I think probably we would find that our town administrator would say, don't touch it with a ten-foot pole.
Yeah, he wouldn't, he wouldn't allow us to get into private matters.
And then what about the maintenance of it? Because you've made it clear that you don't agree that we should be responsible for maintaining it. And I understand that it's a bylaw. But are you going to do your part in reaching out and see what the DPW expects from us as homeowners?
We can certainly do that.
Yeah, that's us. And I, and I will continue to work on trying to get an answer out of Holden's DPW chief.
Okay, are we done? Okay, onward, item ten, Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. Uh, Dave, you want to try to summarize this thing?
So a couple of weeks ago, the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission made, uh, they made the town staff aware that there was a grant opportunity from the EEOEA regarding monies for a land use planning. Uh, it was kind of short notice, they found out about it, and they got the information as soon as they could. Uh, the only assurance of it is that the CMRPCC is aware that the town has been trying to, um, trying to update its master plan. And that they've been aware of that, and because they've been aware of that, they have their care room for any grant funding that might be available. So in this case, they thought we would be interested because this could help to move the master plan forward, which I, I think, I think it will. Recently, there was eighty thousand dollars for a master plan that was taken off the warrant, where it never found its way out to warrant in the first place because of the current financial situation. So working with Mike and the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, it made sense to apply for the grant and see what would happen with it. If we are successful, it'll allow for upwards of three houses, uh, three chapters for the master plan, the land use section, a housing section, and a economic development section. So we decided to go forward with that. We're still waiting to find out if we are successful or not. Hopefully, we will be. Um, yeah, I think the decision to move on the master plan in section seems to be the really practical way to resolve this issue at this point. So as a result, we are going to try to pursue. Any other questions I can turn to?
Yeah, yeah, how, how do I get my sanity back? Because I already screamed at Trish, no way in hell. No way in hell, it's just supposed to happen. And not only that, you go to page four, and what the hell you got in there but subdivision rules and regulations? That's our job, not theirs. I'm sick of this, damn it.
Well, this grant has nothing to do with that. This grant is for master plan chapters.
Well, then what the hell is in this damn thing for crying out loud? On page four, tasks for the RFP or whatever. And then what the hell is Mike for crying out loud come up with five thousand bucks?
Yeah, I, I was going to ask.
Come on, we can't even get our own damn typhens for a grant allowed, but yet come up with five thousand bucks.
Is that five thousand coming out of the, the town's budget? Or is it coming out of the planning board's budget? Has Mike decided on that? I'm sorry, I didn't.
Why doesn't it come before us before it goes to them?
Yeah, that was another question I had too.
Came together very quickly. There was no time between when this, when we received this information in a planning board meeting. Uh, these are our master plan updates. I would think that these would be of interest to the planning board.
Let's just put it this way, I feel that the people in Rutland should be doing a lot of the work, not somebody else.
Well, this is what they're doing here is writing the grants for us. If we are successful in getting the grant money, the people of Rutland will have plenty to do because we're going to have to have a committee meeting for these three elements. And then we would have the meetings, the informational sessions and so forth and so on. The Regional Planning Commission is not doing the work yet, you know, merely to apply for grant that would facilitate these elements of the master plan.
Yeah. So let me, let me ask a question, Dave, and you can, so right now, the focus for this grant is just these three elements, land use, housing, and economic development, correct?
Yes, the grant was written to solicit, to obtain funds for those three elements only.
Which is just a, 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 a partial piece of the total master plan? It's not the whole master plan, correct?
No, it's not the whole master plan, next.
So we're using this grant money just to sort of bite off a chunk?
Uh, this is for three of them. What's that?
I'm sorry, we're just using this twenty thousand dollars just to bite off a, a small or a piece of the total master plan, is that correct?
Well, if we're successful, it would be for fifty thousand dollars for three very major and important chapters. Uh, these chapters here are the leading, most important chapters of the master plan.
Okay. I just, when I read these letters, um, for Mr. Gaitner, for what we were looking to do, which you just toggled from the office of town administrator. I'm, is there a more detailed? Okay. All right, so I'll get back to my first question. When this was discussed for the, the five thousand dollars, which I presume that's the twenty-five percent, correct? Of the twenty that would come out of the town of Rutland?
Uh, yes.
Where was that, when, when Mike sent this out? I presume this is Mike's signature at the bottom. Where was that money coming from? Was that coming out of, uh, see, it says the town's agreed to contribute. Where, um, where was that, what budget was that coming out of?
I believe he's taking that out of his own budget, out of town administrator's budget.
Okay, I'm fine with that. Then it's not coming out of the planning board. Then if he wants to do that, I'm fine. But some of these issues, to Dick's point, needs to come through the planning board. And I'm, I'm a little taken back that, I get it was fast, I understand that. But email does work to, to inform the board or some type of something like that. And it doesn't look like that got done. And I'm a little, little frustrated about that. Because just finding out about it when the packet came out, I, I was like Dick. My temper was a little bit, little bit wound up. But, um, you know, I, finding out about this in a, in a packet that shows up on my doorstep on Friday did not make me very happy. Especially since I saw that letter went out May seventh, which was about twenty-one days ago. Or nineteen days ago, sorry.
So you also got to remember how Governor Baker wants a hundred and forty-five thousand new homes built. And where the hell is he going to get them built?
Central Mass, baby.
What the hell to do?
Central Mass, Dick. Okay, all right, well, that's, that's only comment. I, I mean, if we get it, great, because he's, David, is, is Mike still soliciting for people on the master plan?
Uh, so far, at this point, we have not assembled any kind of a master plan committee in any sort of way. I'm going to see what happens with this, with this grant. If money comes through, and we can actually push out some of these elements, we would then put together a committee at that point.
So he hasn't, he hasn't asked for a solicitation for a master plan committee then, yet, correct?
We have not made any solicitations for a master plan committee. We are waiting to see the outcome of this grant application.
Okay, thank you. Norm?
I don't know, Norm, if you'd like to jump in on this, I know that you and I did discuss this matter. We talked about the short nature of it, and just trying to provide an indication to you that we were thinking about pursuing this.
Uh, well, all, all, all I'm going to say is that, you know, if we're going to do anything as far as updating master. Uh, well, all, all, all I'm going to say is that, uh, you know, if we're gonna do anything as far as updating master plan at all, uh, you know, you, you, you're not gonna find money laying around all over the place. And this sounds like a substantial amount. Not, no matter, you know, you know, no matter what is discussed, no matter what is written, uh, uh, i- in, in the end, the town still has to approve it. We have to approve it. So, you know, they can't just shove it down our throats and say, hey, here's what it's gotta be.
No, right. I, Norm, I'm, I'm a lot better off knowing that that five thousand wasn't coming out of our budget without our authorization. It's coming out of the town administrator. I'm not saying, I feel good about this because it seems like we were, we, we just didn't have any input. And I get it was quick, but the fact that we're not paying for it, okay, maybe I feel a little bit better now.
What, once again, uh, I don't think anybody right now really knows what town budgets are going to be like. And I'm not, I'm not gonna say that we might not be asked to contribute it to it.
Yeah.
You know, I have not heard anything. Nobody has asked me, but, uh, I can see that as being a possibility.
All right.
Well, I, I would just say, I would think it would be, hopefully seen as a good thing that we are trying to get grant money from CMRPCC for fifty thousand dollars. If they make us aware of this type of situation, let's see what happens with it. I mean.
Yeah, you're right, Dave. I'm fine. I just, all, all I'm trying to put out there, Norm and Dave, is that if some of these things come up, you know, all I'd like to know is just be aware of it. Just, and if it, if it's, if it's a gentle email to the board, not specific, I'm fine with that. I just, this came as a big surprise to me when I read it on Friday and I was a little bit wound up that I didn't know anything about it. That was the only problem I had. So all I'm asking is a little bit more transparency down the road if something like this comes up.
Okay, anything more on this grant? Okay, last item, accessory agricultural use zoning by law.
Yeah, if I may through the chair, the, uh, I know we're gonna be speaking more thoroughly about this tomorrow, right?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I had a, a town member person ask me, um, is this gonna change the tax structure of any of those properties?
I, I would.
What's the question, Sean?
Uh, will it change the tax structure on any of these farms to have, to have this bylaw put on? I'm not really sure exactly what he was asking. Um, I think he was concerned that his taxes were gonna go up.
I, I would say.
I don't believe so. I mean, if it's under sixty-one A to begin with, this accessory use by law would not somehow kick them out of sixty-one A if an enti- if an entity engages in the uses listed in this bylaw. I don't believe that would kick them up to sixty-one A. Uh, if you're, these are accessory to agricultural uses to begin with. So if it's an agricultural use that's predominant on, on the, on the land, this would not necessarily change the tax use at all. This would not suddenly make it into a commercial enterprise where they're taxed at a different rate or anything like that. In fact, they would still be taxed at whatever, whatever real estate tax rates of being taxed at now.
Yeah, uh, well, the, um, it's, it's like, are, are they, are they, uh, like Schultz having the, two things that were brought up to me was Schultz having the restaurant on his farm and the brewery on the other. Um, it, you know, these businesses being opened on this pro- on these, on, on these properties, if it's not zoned for it, are they illegal businesses?
Well, I, I, I can, I can comment on the brewery because I know that one more familiar literally. That is an agricultural accessory use because that operator is operating under a alcohol license. That is an al- is a, it's called a, I believe it's called a farm craft beer maker. So that's allowed as an agricultural use.
In, in, uh, concerning to that.
Accessory agricultural use at that. It's not a principal use, it's an accessory one.
Accessory, okay. Did he need to file a special permit for that?
He did not need a special permit because it's accessory to the byright permitted use of agriculture.
Okay.
So if something is permitted as agriculture after principal use, accessory uses are allowed if they're principal to be accessory use. Not therefore a special permit would not be needed in that case.
Okay.
Dave, dude, I got a question on that too. Is, with that accessory agricultural use, is that considered like the, the brewery and Schultz's, are they considered restaurants where they have to follow all the state and local permitting and, and all of that requirements?
Yeah, I believe they do. They have to buy.
Sure, they would have to follow the requirements in terms of the health codes, the licensing codes, yes.
And then my follow-up question is because they're a restaurant slash, uh, retail operation, a food operation, I presume they're paying that quarter percent tax to the town of Rutland too, or I think it's quarter percent. I don't remember the exact number, but there's a, we have a food tax, so I'm not mistaken in town.
Yeah.
So Sean, to my point, we're actually getting tax revenue out of those retail establishments. So if you want to tell your constituent that, you know, we're actually making money from them.
Okay.
Not only that, you have to buy the hops from Massachusetts too.
What's that, Dick?
He has to buy the hops to brew the beer.
Oh, from Massachusetts. Okay, good. So we're keeping it local?
Yes.
Excellent.
Exactly right. If he was not keeping it local in terms of ingredients, then it would not be an allowable accessory use.
Okay. All right.
It would be, it would not be allowed. It's only allowable because it's tied to agriculture, because it's tied to agriculture. That is a significant portion of it. So we are helping other Massachusetts farmers by law operation in town. So yeah, so there'll be a meeting tomorrow, I believe, the bylaw subcommittee has agreed to meet.
Well. I guess what I was hoping, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, see, I'll, I'll be at the meeting tomorrow.
I was hoping we'd discuss it at this meeting too because it, it's gotta come back to us for approval, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, a hearing is required before the planning board.
Yeah.
I mean, I know everybody's just seen it for a day or so, so I, I, I mean, I've only got a few questions that I can come up with right now. And it's mainly on the site plan review. I'm, I'm struggling with, with all of the allowable uses. The only thing I can buy into, and David, you can tell me if this was designed, all these allowable uses that are in there, um, they're covered under this section. Where is it? There, there's a section in here talking about, they've got a, uh, conformed all these state, uh, local law, or local permits. So the planning board doesn't really get, need to get involved. Someone has to follow, you know, like the Board of Health. Um, I just can't find it right now. There was a section in here, um, that said, maybe it was a permitting procedure. Let me read that real quick. Yeah, there it is. In the permitting procedure, section four, the applicant shall be responsible retaining any and all other necessary and applicable federal, state, and local permits and/or licenses as may be required to operate the va- of a validity of a building permit. So my question is, for this bylaw, are we saying the allowable accessory uses are all gonna need building permits?
Uh, no, no, it's not necessarily the case that all of the allowable accessory uses will require building permits, but to the extent that one is needed, the proponent is gonna have to show that, that they met all the requirements. At least on the town side in terms of health.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, here, here's my biggest problem with this bylaw. Who the heck's gonna enforce it?
Well, if the county wants that, whatever the permits, he would be interested. It's the Board of Health approval that the Board of Health has to pay and so forth.
Here's my problem with this, is that knowing, being here over twenty years and knowing that no board knows what the other board's doing, I'm having a hard time with this bylaw with five or six different boards or commissions in charge of keeping this updated. I, I just don't see it working that way. And I'm struggling with this. It's, I, I'm a hundred and ten percent for this bylaw. It's just, how's it gonna be executed? How's it gonna be managed? I, I see it as a complete nightmare when that, when that, when that question comes up.
Well, I, I mean, I think if it needs a building permit, it's gonna be a building permit application at viewpoint. It's a building permit application at viewpoint, then automatically it's, it's, uh.
And I get that, but nowhere on here, it defines on what needs to be done for what?
Uh, DPW? Sorry?
I, I mean, for an example, um, uh, ice cream facility, is that a building permit? Is that DPW? I mean, is that a health? I mean, nowhere on this bylaw does define what these uses need to go for. And i- i- if that's on the, on the person doing it, okay. But my experience in Rutland is it's not gonna get done, it's just gonna get executed. And, and this is gonna be a bylaw that says words and doesn't really have any bite to it. And there, there's my problem with bylaws. Why do them if no one's gonna follow?
I, I, I think an awful lot of what you're talking about.
If there's no any bylaw, if an applicant needs a building permit.
I, I, I think a lot of what you're talking about.
Application, which point that application, probably through the Board of Health, DPW, and fire as well as others. So if, if the, if the use needs a building permit, then this review happens. If you want the applicant and proponent to do what they need to do for permitting anyways.
Norm, what were you gonna tell me?
Well, and, and a lot of the things you're talking about are underlying things to, uh, the, the existing boards. I- i- if someone's gonna build an ice cream stand, they gotta get a building permit, just like that. If they've got a barn and they're gonna convert part of it to a restaurant, that's a major renovation, they're gonna have to get a building permit. If they're going to sell food, they're gonna have to get permits from the Board of Health.
But some of, but some of this stuff, Norm, is not listed on any of our other, sort of what I'm looking for. I've never seen anything talked about, um, you know, um, winery tours or on-farm restaurants. None of that stuff's been talked about on any other discussions on any other board. And that, you know, maybe I'm just being, I've been in this town too long to see how nothing ever gets done correctly. Just, it just happens.
Supposed to change that.
What's that?
We're supposed to change that.
Well, that's what, that's why I'm asking all these, these questions. Cause I, I just don't want this, this to be a bylaw that's basically given, you know, carte blanche to do whatever you want. And oh yeah, well, I forgot to get that, I'll go back and get it. I really don't, and I get it, maybe I'm being too restrictive. I don't know.
No, I, I agree. I want people to obey the law. That's, that's why, you know, I wanna make sure that these accessory to, you know, farming, that they're allowed to do that. One of the main things that's been brought up to me by residence is that, um, which is, this is all hearsay, that these things are being, um, um, you know, kind of given, forgiven, uh, you know, they ask for forgiveness, you know, instead of asking for permission. Um, and I, I, I don't agree with that either. I, I want it, I want it to stop.
You know what?
But the E permitting system, I think, would handle a good part of that.
Yeah, you're probably right, Dick. I'm just being a worrywart. You're right. It's just, well, all these, all these twenty-one things and then the one for the site plan review will have to be added into the E permitting system, I guess, for agricultural access. Okay, good enough. I, I, that, I just, I read through this quickly and I know it's a draft and I know, talk about it tomorrow. I just wanted to get it out to the board now. Cause honestly, guys, and, and Marilyn, I'm, I, I think we're rushing through this thing. We're putting a bylaw in front of us and gonna do it in six weeks?
Well, it's, the bylaw has been reviewed by, you know, it's, it's, excuse me. This is really the, the final step of, of the bylaws. It's been worked on for over years, I understand it.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's been reviewed by town council.
And also, I would say that, you know, I, I was gonna provide this information tomorrow, but I can provide it now. I've been working with the Agricultural Commission on the concept generally, and that's the Agricultural Commission is in favor of pursuing this. Uh, so I've been working with them on uses that they think would be appropriate to advance and list specifically as accessory uses. And then do by site plan for the first time. So there is a history to this bylaw. We wanted to get it to the bylaw subcommittee in case the bylaw subcommittee had interest in this. And I like the questions that I'm hearing tonight. This is very helpful. That's the kind of thing I think we're trying to find. And if there's any, any questions or concerns, it's nice to start to get a handle on what some of those things might be at this point. So we're not asking this board to, to write this thing or do anything in six weeks beyond, really taking a good, hard, critical look at it as you're doing now. Tim and I appreciate your questions.
Okay, good enough. I, the only, the only other question I had for you, Dave, is I know, I can see from the revisions, it's been worked on since last February. Did you have a template to go from? Like somebody else or another?
Yeah, I, I've worked, you know, best practices. I have about twenty different sources that I rely on. If this was, you know, a paper or something, I'd have a very long list of bibliography materials.
Okay, that's all I wanted. Thanks, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I relied on Michigan's work in their rural sector, Indiana's work in their rural sector, Vermont, and a whole host of other bylaws.
I'm telling you right now, if you used Indiana, it's gotta be right then. All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
So let me just, if I may through the chair, just to re, and I, and I'm sure this will probably come up again tomorrow and I'm sorry, but since it isn't on the agenda tonight, and if a person's watching, um, just because this bylaw is being written, e- e- even if it's accepted, doesn't mean that, um, if, it means that even if, if, if the farm's on sixty-one A, the taxes won't go, it won't change the tax structure of the property.
The tax structure, no, but by the same token, if they build a new building, that new building is gonna be taxable.
Yeah.
You know?
I'm, I'm truly.
Or put an addition onto a building.
Or, or Sean, if they, if they open a restaurant up, they owe the town of Rutland whatever that small percentage of retail money is.
Yeah.
So we'll encourage restaurants so we can get more revenue.
We just gotta get the state to, uh, make marijuana a, uh.
An agricultural retail shop?
Yeah.
Do tours.
Have a restaurant.
Yeah, you could have a, a brownie restaurant. Brownie and cookies. All right. All right, I appreciate it. I, I just, I'm not sure if I can be there tomorrow because I might have an interview tomorrow evening. So that's the only reason I wanted to throw some questions out.
Okay.
Dave?
Okay, anything else?
I need to speak to, to Dave about that, this meeting briefly. I don't know, do you wanna do it after this one or? Dave? I seem to have lost my video.
I can see you.
Meryl, I can see you. I can hear you too.
You guys can see me, but I can't see you. I'm obviously having trouble into this Zoom generation, so I'm. into this Zoom generation, so I'm.
Here, I can show you my wine rack.
I was hoping that he could set up that meeting and I'll try to get into it.
Oh, yes, yes, I did. I did set up the Zoom meeting. I sent out the, uh, I did an email, the, uh, the.
Meeting what?
Permission to it plus the agenda and the bylaw. I sent, I sent that information out today.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
All right. Norm? Motion to adjourn.
Okay, just one more quick, quick thing. Tamika, are you there?
No, not yet.
Yep, I'm here.
Yeah. Um, could you put in for planning board stipends for June?
Yes, I was going to reach out to you about that, um, just to touch base on the procedure for doing that because this will be the first time for me.
Mm-hmm. Uh, it, it's just a regular disbursement form on the, uh, list of account numbers. Uh, oh, as I, I think as I've got here is an old one. Planning board with ages was a count 214, 175, 5110.
Okay, and who does that go to? Does that go to Becky or Dan?
Uh, probably to Becky.
Becky, okay.
Uh, and the only thing, uh, Sean, are you still there?
Sean, you there? Let me wake him up.
Sean?
He's not unmuted.
He lost his video. Oh, there he is.
Sean?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah. Uh, are you still declining your stipend?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Okay. And it's 250 each, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Norm, are you sure I'm going to win my election?
Uh, I think it may be close. I, I hear Sheila may be having a change of heart.
Oh, don't you even do that to me, man.
May decide to be a write-in candidate.
All right. So my wife's causing me blowback already. Great. Okay.
Our next meeting is going to be held outside in the parking lot.
I'm with Dick on this one.
Yeah. Well, you know, I'm just kind of thinking, you know, they are talking about opening things up and I'm really kind of wondering if, you know, maybe sometime through the summer, we will actually be able to, uh, uh, you know, stay six feet apart and still at least look at each other in the face.
Right.
Well, now with that, I would like to have some, uh, maybe site visits or things like that so that we all stay up on what's going on.
Yes, yes, I agree, Dick. And please, anybody, if you, there always should be two people going to these sites. Um, you're looking at a stay-at-home dad right here. Get me out of the house.
Yeah, and, and I'm going to say I'm unemployed right now, so I'm looking for something to do.
Okay.
So Dick, if you're going tomorrow, don't hesitate to give me a call.
Same.
I'd like to walk Maple, Maple Estates. I've driven by it and I can see they're working on the road coming in.
All right, I gotta, I gotta, I, um, I'm trying to think what the heck today. Today's Tuesday. Tomorrow I've got to open up an app. So I'm, I'm going to probably, heaven only knows. Right now, um, it's confusing. I got Zoom meetings Thursday, three of them. One tomorrow night with Marilyn and you. Hopefully I can get home in time. And hopefully I'll calm down and I will, uh.
Yes, I do, I do like a calm atmosphere.
Good one, Marilyn.
Make sure you bring your fake flower.
I should have said, I should have said you to my accountant. You could have gone to my accountant. That would have saved me a heck of a lot.
All right, Dick, I'm going to bring my old, uh, pocket watch and I will hypnotize you into being calm.
Good job. All right.
Once again, I apologize for the technical difficulties earlier. Uh, thanks, Dick, for putting on speaker. Uh, so thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. All right. Tim, you made something. Is there anything more?
Well, the only thing is, we can't really do a business meeting until we can do this get-together thing. So I think it's going to be July or August where we have a business meeting and that frustrates me, but I get it.
Yes. And I, I so desperately want a business meeting and I want Dave from doing other things into this business meet and, uh, we need, we need to do this. So anyhow, okay, I'm all.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call. Sean?
Aye.
Uh, Marilyn?
Aye.
Bye. All right.
Tim?
Aye.
And Norm, aye. Thank you all.